This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon. This is Harold Watson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, we are conducting this specially special meeting on go to meetings dot com on Monday, October 26th, 2020 at noon. The quorum for this meeting is three, and as far as I can see, we have three people. Christina is here.
Present.
William Boyd is not here. I am here, Harold Watson. Dan is not here.
I am here.
Dan is here.
Dan is here.
Yep.
And William's here.
Sorry. Excuse me, Dan?
William is also here. He's just not showing up.
Oh, he is? Well, I take that back. Okay. And John Staley is here. So that means we're all here. So five, five out of five. So let's get started. Today, we call this meeting. Our agenda is very short. We call this meeting actually to discuss the airport master plan that is being given to us by Bridgeport and to collect our comments on what we would like to, how we would like to respond to them. I I have comments in one selected area. And I think that what we should try to do in this, in this one hour period, if possible, is to come up with a text or a list of those items that would help Susmita that she could forward on through for planning. I believe that's what she's doing with zoning and with, she's already done it with ZBA. I would like to make the suggestion that we start with ZBA's list that they already submitted and adopt that as the beginning of our own list. That assumes everybody has seen that list. It was sent on an email with, through Susmita not long ago. But you know what? I'm getting ahead of myself. First, we need to call the meeting to order. Anybody? Second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Sorry. Now to return back in terms of our business today, I think that we should come up with a list. Let me ask Aileen, is it possible, Aileen, for you to, in your notes, to take back, take down a list that you can read back to us and that we can give it a vote? I would like to have a unanimous vote from us, if that's at all possible, understanding that this is advisory and that what we're asking them to do is to look at any points that might not be included in their presentation. That should be considered.
Excuse me, Harold?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a minor correction. There is no vote involved. It's just a letter of recommendation to the mayor on behalf of the Planning Commission. And so whatever recommendations each one has, if you, if they're able to summarize, and you know, maybe Aileen can take notes right now, or she can watch the video, and I can watch the video and do the letter and set it to all as a draft review. And then once you're all okay, if you can just let us know by tomorrow, if the letter is satisfactory, then I can just send it back to the mayor before October 31st.
Okay.
So I do have ZBA's list here, if you want me to just read out for, as a refresher for now.
Please.
So here's, oh, here's what their letter of recommendations is. At a public hearing on October 6th, 2020, the Stratford Zoning Board of Appeals discussed the proposed draft airport master plan report that is currently seeking public comment. Many of the comments listed below have already been communicated to your planning consultant early on in the outreach phases. The board made the following comments for consideration of master plan. Number one, the plan does not consider coastal resilience efforts undertaken by the town of Stratford to improve coastal resiliency in the area. Number two, the plan does not consider coastal roadway protection and improving access to and from the site in weather-related events. Number three, the plan does not discuss flood mitigation and drainage concerns that are currently present at the site. Number four, the plan does not consider the potential impacts of sea level rise at the site. Number five, the plan does not consider the activity of migratory bird populations at Stewart P. McHinney National Wildlife Refuge. Number six, the plan does not discuss impacts of runway airport expansion on the local and regional transportation network. Number seven, the plan does not discuss anticipated infrastructure roadway cost to the town of Stratford. Number eight, the plan does not consider how it can contribute to the town's greenway network currently under planning and design and how the airport might be a partner in its expansion. Number nine, the plan does not discuss the economic development impacts to be anticipated by the town of Stratford. Number 10, the plan has taken an island planning approach, giving little to no consideration of any planning initiative outside the confines of the airport. A more comprehensive approach should be taken to promote a more equitable planning effort. Number 11, more detail should be given regarding how potential aircraft volume increases might impact the quality of life in the area, air quality, local flora and fauna, and other environmental resources. And if I may add, there are two things I would see that, you know, they're not part of this list that maybe you could consider. One is the discussion of impacts to the minority population and ethnically diverse populations north of the airport, which is also part of the opportunity zone. And number two is that there is a piece of parcel owned by the town of Stratford near the proposed runway airport expansion and redlands in the area, which, you know, I think should be considered for potential impacts. And, you know, if they're planning to acquire that town parcel, I don't know. It doesn't answer that question in the master plan. So having said that, Harold, it's up to you to decide what to do next.
Well, I think both points that you made were points that I wanted to bring up. The only, the other thing is that I wanted to make sure, very clear, it's stated, but it's, I don't think it's clear enough, is the impact on the marshlands, the marshlands that we exist on are, is considered to be one of the most significant coastal marshlands on the Long Island Sound. And the airport really takes it as basically swampland without any holistic look of the whole of the marsh. So I think that should be, that that should be clarified or added as another point. But I think your two points are critical. The only other, the other thing is that I think that there, there are essentially some takings that would require any expansion, including in our, in our opportunity zone, that have a real financial impact on Stratford. So ultimately, I think that, yes, we should include your two points. And I think that the list that, that ZBA did is a very thorough, complete list. I've gone back through everything that I could find on their website over the last week. And I will also went in, in real detail through the coastal resiliency planning. Every, there's about 40 pages of our coastal resiliency planning that deal specifically with the airport and the environments around, around it. So I, I went through those pages several times. And I, I think that we have to bold letter the fact that this master plan does not pay any attention to our coming coastal resiliency, which certainly Bridgeport itself is paying a lot of attention to because it's having a, as great or greater an impact on their coast. So let me, I would like to, before we go further, I just, can I just see a show of hands? Do you think that the, that this list that, that Susmita just read makes sense as a basis for what our statement is? Can I just see a show of hands? John?
Yes.
Okay. So we're all in agreement that we could start with that as our list. I think it'll make our, our time today a lot, a lot quicker and a lot easier to get somewhere. We, I think we can actually ask Aileen to refine any of these points if need be. And I think that I would love to see the two points that Susmita just made also added in as highlight because that's part of where, when we talk about coastal resiliency, we're really talking about those opportu, that opportunity zone districts three in particular that is in, right in the flood zone. So I would love to see those two added. Yes, Christina?
Um, I want to just go on record as stating that I, I think ZBA's list was incredibly comprehensive. I found myself, you know, as soon as I, you know, came across something that struck me as problematic, that, that I found it to be on their list. So I found that a lot of the things that I was coming up with were redundant of that. So I felt like I, you know, just wanted to sort of state that I found their list to be incredibly comprehensive and thorough. I will also go on record as the, as the commissioner representing the district in which this is going to occur, that I was actually really, I'm trying to find the right word to use in a public meeting, but I found the entire presentation to be, it was almost as if Stratford didn't exist around the airport. I found it to be, um, I, I found it to be almost an affront to the character of our town, to the character of that particular part of town. I found it to be almost problematic on every single page of this plan. And I'm not saying that, that the master plan itself shouldn't exist or that, that improvements to the airport don't need to happen. They obviously do. And they obviously need to be tied into both existing planning efforts and, and to, you know, to everything that's going on or that we want to happen in our town. But it is extremely concerning to me that very little consideration is being given to the character of any of the communities surrounding the airport. Susmita had touched on, had touched rightfully so on the issue of environmental justice, especially for the South End, which yes, is not in my district per se, but we are neighbors and, and their, their well-being, particularly the air quality and the air, and the noise that they will experience is not acceptable. And for Lordship, you know, we've heard over and over again from many people who live in, in Lordship, how concerned they are about the master plan's impact on the character of Lordship. And I echo their, their thoughts. So I will stop talking, but I found the whole thing to be shocking.
Yes, William. And then I would love to hear from everybody. William, you raised your hand next.
I echo the same sentiment that Christina just did. My only question is, will there be a public meeting concerning this from, I live in the South End and from Lordship? Because I can hear the, they have a program that scatters the geese, I guess, or migratory birds. And it's a sound that goes off, used to be like every five or 40 seconds. And I never knew what it was. And I finally called and they said, yeah, there's this thing at the airport, the sound goes off, and it's supposed to frighten the birds to keep the birds off the runway. And I say all that to say, I had no idea that was even there. All I knew is that it was an annoying sound. If you're home during the day, just once you lock in on it, it's terrible. So now you fast forward that was increased airport frequency of planes landing and taking off, which I don't necessarily mind if it's an economic boon for the town, but there has some, has to be some guidance in and around it. I don't know if there's some silencers, certain types of planes. There's a time when they can come in or not. I don't know if those kinds of things can be mitigated to be a help for Stratford and not a harm for economic development. That's my only point.
Yes, Daniel?
Listen, I, I agree 100% with what Christina mentioned. When, when William just brought up meetings, public meetings, if you go back and see the public meetings that had taken place, I think it goes back to early 2019. They had it at Birdseye. They had one at St. James. My question is, how actively were our residents as well as our administrators within the town involved in these meetings? There's no list to show who was, who was there, who attended. And I think that's interesting to, you know, I, to be honest with you, did any one of us, you know, I've been on the, the Planning Commission for a couple of years now, did any one of us hear of this, these meetings being taken place? And as you mentioned, Christina, it seems like Stratford's having the mix.
Yeah, yeah.
To Bridgeport, even though we're having these meetings in Stratford, right?
Yeah. It's like they're on planet Sikorsky. Like, it's just weird. It's like you.
And I think, looking at their notes, I think their next public meeting is June 20th or something. Don't hold me to it, but they do have another public hearing coming.
June?
Present their final report.
November.
Oh, November, November. Okay.
Schedule. They have, I believe it's a June date. So.
Excuse me, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Susmita?
Commissioner Seft sent a few thoughts by email and asked me to relate to the commission members since we were so close to the meeting anyway. I said I will read it into the record. The first one was, what is the economic impact that is foreseen for Stratford with the improvements to the airport? Second one, what impact will this have on real estate values in Lordship and surrounding areas? Third, has there been a local residential consensus on moving forward with expansion? Number four, will this have an impact on air quality due to more flights and traffic? Number five, will there be a need for fuel storage tanks due to increased volume? Number six, what is the approach for buying properties in Stratford for expansion? That's it.
Okay.
Dan, do you want to add to that?
No, and I just, you know, I, I saw that some of that was brought up by the, by the ZBA also. So I think, you know, there's some real concerns there. You know, once you expand an airport and then looking at what their needs are as the airport, the one thing I looked at specifically from a fuel standpoint, now they've got to fuel these bigger planes. They now run in trucks continually every single day to fuel these, to fuel these planes? Or are they looking at putting in a facility to house fuel, which again adds to some of the concerns that we have environmentally?
Well, I think also, if I can just add to that for a second, Dan, it's also that we've spent a lot of time dealing with our emergency FEMA response. And what they're, what they do there impacts Stratford directly. I hadn't even thought about fuel storage. If you're putting fuel storage in, in swampy grounds and we have overflows of water, who's to say those fuel storage, that fuel storage doesn't pop out of the ground? That is a problem in a lot of coastal areas. So there are, there are a lot of things that really need to be considered carefully, I, I think. But in any case, the only person we haven't heard from yet is John. And I know, John, that I heard that you had done a lot of research. So I would love to hear you, if you have a.
Sure. I have, I have a couple of comments. Thank you, Chair. The, first of all, the, I'm in agreement with Christina in terms of, we've heard nothing about this, as Dan also said, hadn't been, Stratford hasn't been involved with this. They're 70% into their process. And at about 50, 60%, they had a recommendations for the future facilities of forecast for, for facility requirements, which we never received anything on. Matter of fact, I just received this maybe a couple of weeks ago. So the, very, very interested in the lack of process involving Stratford and the, they, they also, and the public noise, the noise, they, even a year ago made a comment, the, the commission doing this research, the, the master plan for Bridgeport, they said, they were asking by the public about the noise. And they made a comment stating that, well, you know, it's, it's a public airport and it's like being by a public highway. Well, first of all, that was the wrong answer, I believe. And what was, what is a public airport? Allegheny left in 1976. I don't believe it's been public since then. So my concern is, where are they going? Where are the facts? What is this really going to go on? And do we have a valid land agreement saying they cannot expand?
Yeah. Yeah.
We do.
John, can I interrupt for one second? That is the one point that I think should be added to this list. I have it in my notes here because they clearly stated that we cannot do any expansion without Stratford's approval. Essentially, I think when we sold them land or gave them the right to move Main Street, we made an agreement at that point that they would not expand beyond the expansion that we allowed by letting them move the boundary. So that's something that I think we need clarity on, even from Stratford, because I have not, I can't find any information about that in my search. Sorry for interrupting.
So I would also like to, I would also like to know about their definition of public airport. It has not been a public airport. And they're, they're calling it a public airport. So.
Yeah. That's interesting. Yeah.
And they're also.
The fact that it's on public land mean that it's a public airport?
Right. Now, they're also anticipating, one of their comments they made last year, a year ago, that they're going to have five to eight flights per day that will accommodate approximately 100 to 150 passengers. I didn't see that anywhere in this proposal, or master plan.
Well, if I could comment, one of the things that I see in, in this plan is that it's what I would call incremental growth. They're presenting a plan to us, essentially saying, all we want to do is repair the runway. But, but incrementally over the next decade, they're talking about expanding. Then they're talking about lengthening it once and lengthening it twice and shifting the whole, the whole runway further west. So I think that we, as, as a town, need to look, look at the completed project, not at the incremental project.
Do you know what the completed project is and the facts?
I only know it from looking at their planning documents on their website. There is one document that what we're looking at for this piece is the incremental, basically the, all they're asking us to do is to allow them to create a repaving of the existing 11, the number 11 runway. And but if you look at their document on their website of the master, master plan, long term, it has what they would really love to see happen in terms of full development over the next decade. I think the way they get away with it, they're saying this is a five-year master plan. So they're looking at in what occurs during that time. But they're, it's all preparation. It's, you know, if you build it, they will come.
Wow. Thank you.
Yes, William?
So I guess what the master plan is, it's, to everyone's point, it's more so beneficial to Bridgeport. And if you're going to be coming in with those type of passengers, whether it's five years or 10 years out, it seems like that's going to be a boon for Bridgeport and not Stratford. And I guess the only chess piece we have in this is we have the land that they need to expand the runway. So by having that, we kind of hold the keys to this thing. However, is, is our POCD and our planning plan going to be able to supersede the potential economic and actually the power of Bridgeport really forcing this? Are we going to be able to be a stopgap for this?
Well, William, may I, may I comment on that? In that?
Sure.
I, my understanding, we all have to remember clearly, and it's not mentioned in this, that the state is looking for a airport along the coast in Western Connecticut. So it's either, it's either going to be Tweed and New Haven or Sikorsky in Stratford. They're, they're, they feel like they really need that for economic development of the region. So whatever Bridgeport's doing, they have full support of the state in doing what they're doing. And it's my understanding that the tipping balance between Sikorsky and Tweed has tipped in favor of Sikorsky because of a lot of the same problems that we're bringing up here. There is too much environmental risk to the surrounding community at Tweed. They're selling this prob, this project as, oh, it's in the middle of a swamp. It doesn't matter. So I just think we need to be clear that there's a larger story that is worried, that is, sorry, that is, that is part of. Yes, Dan?
So before COVID, I was flying out of Tweed at least once a week. So listen, I'm familiar with all the airports around. I also fly out of Westchester. So if I look at Westchester, you know, it's really a 40-minute drive for me to get here, to get to Westchester. Stratford obviously would be convenient because I live in town. But when you're looking at proximity to the New Haven market, right, where in order for you to fly out of New Haven, if you're a New Haven resident, you have to go up to Hartford or you have to go to New York or Westchester. So I think from a central location where it's needed the most would be the, would be Tweed. And I think the environmental impacts on Stratford specific, specifically are greater than what you would find on Tweed. I think that Lordship Market as well as the areas surrounding the airport, I think it has more of an environmental impact than you would have to deal with up at Tweed. I mean, I could be wrong. I'm just, just knowing, flying out of that airport and seeing the surrounding homes. You know, it's more of a detriment to, to Stratford than it is to New Haven, right? Or East Haven or Tweed.
Dan, are you flying out commercial or are these private?
Commercial.
Lear jet?
Commercial. Commercial.
But they're still small.
Yeah. So the, the flights out of, which is American, America's flying out of Tweed going down to Charlotte. Before it was Philadelphia, I was flying to Philadelphia. So, you know, I, I do fly a lot and I see more, in more advantageous out of Tweed than, than Stratford. Stratford's relatively close to the New York airports. So, and I see a need in Eastern Connecticut to have a local airport. I think the only other airport that's close would be Green, which is in Rhode Island.
Yeah.
Commissioner Watson, just wanted to add two other things. I know that we specified that there's no discussion of flooding impacts or drainage impacts, but I think it'll be best if we can expand further and say, you know, I also voiced this at the public informational meeting last November, when I attended one meeting that they invited everyone. I asked, what are the historical trends of flooding on the site? How much has been the damage? What was the amount of, you know, claims or, you know, whatever community investments had to be made to further bring it back to normalcy? So knowing the historical trends and claims would give an idea about, you know, moving forward, how much more the community might have to invest in this, not just the airport. And the second one is specifying about our MS4 stormwater permit right now, municipal stormwater permitting requirements, that any drainage impacts should be meeting the requirements of a municipal stormwater permit, MS4 guidelines.
Thank you, Susmita, because that was on my list of questions. The, does, would MS4 apply if it's not our, if it's not Stratford lands? It would apply from a state point of view? Or would our MS4 permit come into effect even on their property?
It's for everyone. Everyone, you know, connecting to the municipal sewer has to abide by the requirements of MS4 permitting.
I think. I think also more based on what Sister Smith was saying that we should include in our list that there has been no real hydrologic, if I'm using the right word, study done of the Great Marsh. Not only in terms of major storms, but in terms of flow of water. There is a natural occurring movement of water from the Houstonic to the Great Bay. That and then to Long Island Sound that takes place. So things like this future build suggesting that they could fill four and a half acres of land in order to accommodate their runway expansion. What that four and a half acres of land does is it falls right in the middle of where the water that needs to flow in and out through the under access road there. I mean, underneath Lordship Boulevard, there are giant, everybody knows them, the tidal gateways that that appear there. If you look at the map of their future expansion, it would have some impact on all of that. Anybody else?
Harold?
Yes.
I'm muted.
Nope, you're you're there.
Yeah, I I still go back to the noise and and the lack of Stratford being involved in this whole process. And what do we Stratford get from this other than headaches? Now, if they're looking at approximately five to eight flights in a day of a hundred to one hundred and fifty people. I mean, that's what eight hundred passengers and we're, how about the traffic? And the cars and the transportation? There's so many questions.
I I agree absolutely. And I think so then maybe that is what you have, we have to add in there. Where are the traffic studies for each of these incremental periods of growth? That would allow us to say, yes, we could be, we will favorably support what you're doing. And maybe there is such a thing as a level of where we would not support, but we could say to them, we support you doing this. I I look at it and say, well, short of closing down the airport, they do need to repave that runway because it's now becoming nonfunctional. So but do we want to support it, them expanding it? We don't know. I mean, that that's where eventually Stratford is going to have to take some kind of a stand in terms of our own master plan. Yes, John.
I'm I'm okay.
Okay.
No, I have a question.
Yes, William.
Okay, yeah, considering all of these different things, it seems like we're not so much anti it. I think we have more questions than we have answers. So considering that, I I would be somewhat in favor for more commercial, not passenger flights, but commercial because of Amazon is there. And it would help us to be more of a hub and allow that sort of commercially driven industry. I would almost be accepting to that if there was a timeline of when those planes are coming in, flight patterns. But if you add in the possibility of, you know, passenger flights and the hundred and fifty, you know, passengers a day. You know, given that, I think that's a little too much, you know, given. But, you know, you don't want to choke Stratford off from not having use of the airport. But where is the fifty fifty? Where is, can we mitigate or modulate figure like, okay, we'll accept this, but not that. Do we know that at this, we I'm sure we don't know that right now. But can we come to some sort of working toward that? So at least we give them, okay, here's what we want and we don't want that. Is there something we could do with that?
Seems like we're left out of that right now.
Yeah, and I also think that if you read carefully, the FAA requirements for a public airport. Essentially removes our say as to how it operates. So we don't have the choice of saying you can use these planes, but not these these planes. We don't have the say of of what hours the operation can be. We don't have a say in a lot of those things because FAA is a federal operation, I think, that supersedes local control. So what we have to do is it's kind of like when we're looking at a development. We have certain things that we could talk about, but we can't, a lot of things that we might want to talk about are our own opinions. They're not necessarily what we as a planning board can say, can speak about. And I think the same is true partly with Stratford in that we don't have a say in everything that Bridgeport would decide. And specifically that the airport entity decides. Because that is a chartered, I I I don't know the legality of it, but that's chartered as a an airport is a federal operation. Yes, Christina.
Um, I mean, to that point, has the town attorney been asked or given an an opinion about where those lines, those delineation lines exist between local control and federal than federal, I guess jurisdiction and where those areas are so that we're not sort of not just the planning commission, but just the town in general is sort of, you know, where where we should be concentrating our comments and efforts and questions rather than just sort of like touching on things that are beyond our control.
Christina, that's an excellent point. Yes, ma'am.
If I may answer that question. Can I answer that question?
Sure.
So when it comes to federal federally owned properties and federal processes. They override local control. So if it's a it's federal aviation is doing something on a property in the larger interest of the region. Oftentimes, even though there is a lot of local resistance, if that's what, you know, has been followed through the right protocol, like following their public engagement and, you know, showing the impacts and everything and mitigating impacts. They don't have to abide by local processes. So they can just go ahead and implement them.
I think I'm asking, I I think Sister Smith, thank you for that. I think what I'm asking for is like, what exactly are those areas and topics that that like? I guess like when you say they have control, I'm trying to wrap my brain around exactly what aspects of an airport expansion that would entail.
Anything on that property.
But anything around, I mean, if it's impacting anything around the property. You know, I I I guess I'm having a hard time sort of understanding where those lines are.
And that's why they do the environmental impact statement. So that considers impacts on neighboring properties and areas. And they demonstrate how they mitigate the impacts. And that's why this whole process is about, you know, considering what the impacts are. And they they've asked for feedback from commissions and boards or the town in general, but they don't come before a commission for a development review.
And Christina, if I could just make a comment, I noticed reading through, when we went to their last public meeting, we just both went, it's private citizens because planning was not invited as a to to it as a board. But I gave a long along, my comments were all about coastal resiliency and the flooding and how the airport was under two feet of water during Sandy and all of that. I looked at the document that they came up with and they added in one piece of verbiage that they expect that the tea hangers or that I guess one of one of the hangers that's closest to Main Street are highly vulnerable to repeated flood flooding. Consequently, they're only going to use it for tie down of airplanes. Which which was which was their accommodation of the fact that this is FEMA floodlands. My other comment is, and I think Aileen, if you could make sure this gets included in some way, that the E I S that they're working with, the environmental impact statement that they did was done, I want to say in ninety six or ninety eight. So we're talking about something that's twenty five years old. Stratford's and our understanding of the Great Marsh twenty five years ago is fundamentally different now than it was then. It doesn't, the E I S does not take into account any of the research that's been done about our about global warming and rising sea tides in that area. I think that one thing that Stratford could do is insist that they update our environmental impact statement specifically for the data that's available through coastal resiliency, the FEMA data data on coming floods and high tide floods, not just storm floods. Does that make sense? Did you get that at all? Aileen, Aileen.
Word for word.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Is that okay with everybody else?
Yeah.
Yes, Dan.
Um, I just have a comment, that's all.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sister Smith and then Dan.
Oh, sorry. I don't think they will, you know, whatever they have published right now, that is an equivalent of what you consider an environmental impact statement. Realistically speaking, they're so far along in the process, I don't know if they would consider doing one, which is which will take at least two to three years time.
Well, except Sister Smith, in their document, if you look at their bar chart of where we are in the process, we are right now in the process where it says environmental. John, you mentioned it, you mentioned their process document saying that we are right in the environmental considerations section.
Yeah.
Right here, it it's it's like it's laid right out there. They don't mention it at all in any of the supporting information, but it's right there. That's where the discussion is supposed to take place in public.
Harold, a quick question, you mentioned that. You you mentioned the the state of Connecticut supported it. Now, in one document, it said that there was a bridge team of Bridgeport, Connecticut and a private investor. Now, the private investor was seven million, the town, the state of Connecticut, our previous governor, seven million. Is that still, I mean, there's they're gonna, they're gonna, it did also say they're going to move the hangers to a new location and the tower. When they move eleven twenty nine and extend expand it. But I don't believe that the federal aviation has a say in land around and so forth, that they can overrule the town.
Where, John, my understanding, reading it through, it took me a while to see what exactly where the biggest where the biggest thing that we need to focus on is the expansion of the ends of the rail, not the not the actual not the actual runway, but the ends of the runway. What they want to do is they want to shift it all to the west. Because that will allow them to accommodate, they want to get up to fifty seven hundred. That's what will allow them, William, to come up with the seven thirty sevens and all of that. That's what will allow them to come up with the airplanes that Amazon might use. So with until they get to that length, they don't have the runway for big planes to land. The problem is, is that in addition to those runway lengths, you also have to have the safety zones that go there and also the height, the height zones. And that's where it has direct huge impacts on Stratford in that the safety zone extends way into Lordship Boulevard. The parcel that is that we argued about in planning about the landscape along the roadway. That parcel falls now within this zone, which means it could not ever be built. The commercial crickets, that building, which we allowed them to infill.
Oh, cricket cutter hut?
Yeah, that we allowed them to infill up to thirteen feet elevation to get it out of the flood zone. And so doing, we now have created a situation where that would be too high to be in their fly zone. That would have to be torn down. So there are a lot of things that we have to consider that if we actually were going to build any dikes in those areas, they're going to need to be seventeen feet above sea level. Current mean sea level. Well, seventeen feet is getting into their flying zone. If you put a, if you put a pickup, I mean, if you put a cargo truck above it going down the road, another seventeen feet, that's thirty four feet above sea level. That gets into their fly zone. So the whole notion of of us developing Lordship Boulevard with more commerce also needs to be sorted out. So I think the the state needs to come in if they really are are interested in seeing this happen. At the same time, the state needs to make sure that we're not the party that's going to get the shaft on this, that they accommodate us. Yes, William, William and then Dan.
Is that a Joe Gresko or one of our state reps issue to introduce that to the state legislature?
I actually spoke with Joe about it over the weekend and yes, it is. And there will be more speaking about it, I'm sure. Yes, Dan.
Just just two quick things. First of all, I think if the if the federal government really wants to do this like a state highway, right? They'll come in and take it, the eminent domain will be ineffective and they'll take what they need to take. That's that's my first point. Second of all, because of time, I'm busy today. So I think the Z B A comments are are sufficient. I think we want to add those other two, which Sister Smith have brought up. So I think we'll add those two, which will be thirteen, I believe, added to their eleven comments. So I'm good with, I am good with adding those additional two and going with the eleven that was put before us with Z B A. I don't know if there's any other additions you guys want to put in there, but I think we're good with those. And I think it covers basically everything that we've talked about.
I I I could agree with you, Dan, but I would love to make sure that we put in there that we need clarity on the negotiate, the agreement between the Stratford and Bridgeport in terms of the no expansion of contract that was signed between the two, between the two entities. That we need, that's actually not necessarily sent to them, but we need to know from our lawyers, what is that contract? And what does it allow us to do and not do? Since it's the Bridgeport Airport that keeps bringing up the issue.
And maybe.
The only other thing that I would love to do is to see that we ask for an I S or E I S that it fully reflects the coastal resiliency FEMA document.
And is the mayor and the administration on on board with what the Z B A, Z B A has put out there? Do you know that?
I can't hear you clearly, Dan, could you just speak louder?
Sure, is the mayor and the administration on board with, did they have an opportunity to look at what the Z B A is put out there so far?
I think, I don't know if they had an opportunity to see, but I know that it was forwarded from Z B A to the mayor. And I mean, I can certainly put in a letter that the commission would request more clarity on the agreement between Stratford and city of Bridgeport on the expansion of the property. So that, you know, they can respond back in writing, either the administration or the airport officials. Regarding, I mean, just because we're coming to an end, almost twelve fifty one. So I just want to clarify, Dan, on the other eleven items that you said. So is it okay if I expanded on the flooding impacts to include historical trends and claims? And on the other piece on drainage to include MS four permitting requirements?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Well, I think we did talk about traffic also. Yeah, with the expansion and we also have the Army engine plant hopefully one day. That there will be an expansion of traffic and, you know.
Well, you know what, John, you're absolutely right because that that falls right within planning. That is within our purview, we should be, we should make a comment on that. We need to know what, how is this going to? We need to know what, how is this going to impact our local roadways? So that's a question to the state and to the airport. And honestly, it's, it's a matter of who's going to pay for this? We're talking about a, we're talking about a dike that goes from the Army engine plant down to Short Beach that is necessary to keep that area from flooding on our Stratford property. Well, who's going to pay for that if it has to go in there in order for the airport not to be flooded constantly? Is it going to fall on Stratford to make sure that happens? Or are we going to get a commitment that it will fall on the airport? Yes, William.
That is considered, Main Street is a state road, yes?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Right, so they won't, if they, to your point, if they say, okay, we're paying for it, we now basically have no say, so it's sort of an eminent domain type of thing, is that correct?
Yes, except they did not do the movement with, through eminent domain. That was all negotiated with Stratford.
Okay.
So we have fourteen?
Go ahead.
We have, what, we have thirteen statements now? Fourteen?
I think fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, okay, I'm
Do you have any other questions for us about clarity on those points?
Sister Smitha?
No, I think everything is good. So I will send you all a draft letter, hopefully by the end of the day today or early tomorrow. And then if you have any further comments or questions, feel free to send it only to me, not as a group. And then I will relay that to the, you know, commission, like asking what, you know, whether we should reconsider. I think as long as, if, if there's something that's not in those fifteen points, if somebody else has thought of, it doesn't hurt to put in the, you know, draft letter anyway. And we, as long as the meeting went fine and nobody disagrees with anything, I think it should be okay.
If you could put our new points at the top and then say, they're also in agreement with, with the
Sure.
on these points. Aileen, thank you for the work that you're going to have to do on this. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank everybody for joining today.
Do we need to make a motion to close the meeting?
We need to make a motion to close because we have about five minutes left. Yes, John, do you have a question or you close?
Thank you.
And second?
Second.
Christina? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Have a good day, folks, stay safe.
Look at us, five minutes early.
Thank you.
Fast, we do. Thank everybody.